...of what the initial estimated costs were would have you. Let's talk about where we all are today and then we can have the CLA and the CAO concur or not with your today's recommendations and your estimates as to the cost factors, the cost potential savings, et cetera. Okay? My time. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to start with my opening comments. Honorable council members, thank you for taking your valuable time and hopefully approve the Computer Science Corporation and Google contract for a new citywide email program. This is a challenging undertaking for all of us, and I want to thank you and your staff for your work, time, and patience you've put into understanding this solution that we are recommending to address the city's upcoming technology challenges. Speaking for my entire team, we know you all have been strenuously informed by numerous parties and you have received all kinds of differing information, some of which is accurate and some of which could be potentially inaccurate. We also want to acknowledge the concerns that have been raised, and we believe we have addressed these. Some people might suggest to you that the CSC Google solution is new and untested technology. Actually, it has been tested, used for years in many forms, and endorsed by a number of public, major public sector institutions and private sector corporations. So it is more than a way of the future, it is actually a way of the present.
The vision we should be pursuing is one of how we use information to provide better, more reliable services. That's according to District 13 Councilmember and Council President Eric Garcetti, who strongly supports the move to the cloud.
There's no question to me that we should be moving towards the cloud, whether that's Google, whether that's Microsoft, whether that's Novell in the future, whoever it is. I think we've had much that's in the cloud essentially because we're linked through the internet, and we also have a lot that we've had here. But, long-term, part of what we've been hampered by, and I think the employees of ITA have done an extraordinary job with too few resources and too many systems, but we need to get that to a place that is more coherent. Though we're a big enterprise in the IT world, we're a very small one and can definitely leverage more of what we're doing. I have a number of questions about specifically some of the cloud issues and some of the things that were raised, and then I want to say a few things. First of all, have we ever been subject to denial-of-service attacks on the current service that we have right now for our email?
Yes, we have. I'm going to let Kevin Crawford, he's my AGM, answer that.
Denial-of-service attacks?
Yes.
Has that happened to us here?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's, I know it's been a concern when people say, "May, for instance, Google went down." That was a concern. And Google, just to be clear, is not giving us separate servers. We're in their large tank. If Google goes down, we go down. Right?
That is correct.
But we've also gone down on our own because of those denial-of-service attacks, or not?
Yes.
Okay. And I think we covered, I think Mr. Cardenas covered, but this is not new money that we're going to be saving, but it's money that we budgeted that we need to save, that if we don't do this, we don't save. Is that correct? Is that a, maybe the CAO can speak to that? Yes?
Seeking clarification on actual costs, District 14 Councilmember Jose Ruzar asked for the source of the startup money, since the upgrade was not included in the current budget.
I heard this out of him in Budget and Finance, but I wanted just to clarify one thing on the cost, because in Budget and Finance, it was put more, the way it was phrased was more that it's going to cost us more. Today, I keep hearing savings, so I wanted to just clarify that very basic issue, the cost. So, for this coming fiscal year, '09, actually this year, '09-'10, it's going to cost us an additional $1.7 million, correct?
$1.9.
$1.9, okay. And that, how we're going to get that funding despite it not being allocated in our budget is explained in our report.
We recommend using the settlement, the Microsoft settlement dollars, as well as taking in advance the rebate that Google's offering.
Yeah. And, over five years, it's going to cost them additional $5 million?
Well, actually, within five years, there's a savings associated with this contract.
So there will be savings?
That's right. We're comparing the cost of this contract versus the cost of maintaining Groupwise for the next five years.
Okay, and that's...
And so, the cost of Google on an annual basis is $17.5 million, and the cost of maintaining Groupwise is $22.9 million.
And joining us now is the Assistant General Manager of the Information and Technology Agency, Kevin Crawford. Mr. Crawford, welcome to Council Week in Review.
It's great to be here.
First of all, Information Technology Agency, what does it do for the city? What are its responsibilities?
The Information Technology Agency takes care of enterprise-level applications, the telephone system, the network, and backing up of those systems.
When you're talking about enterprise-level applications, what sort of things does that entail? Does that also involve installing programming and software and things like that?
Absolutely. Enterprise-level applications like the financial system, the backup system, email, and so on.
How important has email and the electronic communications become to city employees during the city's business?
I think that email has now become more of a utility than it is a service that we provide anymore. It's absolutely required to do business in today's...
Of course, there was a lot of conversation in council about the Google contract, email, and the cloud. Most of us know and use email, but people have been asking me ever since this came up before council, what is this cloud?
The cloud is actually the internet space that everybody uses today. What's different is, is that currently, our email system sits inside servers that we run in our data centers here, whereas now, what we're recommending is moving this to an internet system that is running, or a data system that is running in the internet. So at somebody else's data center.
I know that some years ago, I think it was Sun Microsystems was talking about having a lot of applications running on its servers up in the Bay Area, that you would have just a bare-bones computer with very little storage space on your desktop at home, and they would take care of all the internal guts. That sort of thing has kind of gone out of favor, though, amongst the internet community, hasn't it?
No, I don't think so. Some people might say that we're actually doing a full circle, where we got back to the mainframe, where you had a green screen, plain terminal, but there are certain applications that we need to run in-house, which have security requirements or other requirements that we need to be able to run directly. Unlike email, which has now become a utility, where other companies are doing it much, much better than we ever could.
Obviously, the other huge question that has been bouncing around City Hall in your department is, how safe is this cloud enterprise system? And what, if anything, could possibly go wrong with the email system if we were to be migrated over to the cloud?
Well, obviously, we're never going to get to a point where we can say that anything is absolutely 100% safe. However, Google provides many more times the number of people that we have in ITA just to do security. So, that is a key component of their business. They have to keep an eye on that absolutely every minute of every day, and so the security that we will be provided that way is going to be actually better than what we have today.
Of course, security comes in two forms. One is the impenetrability of the system, so that your data is safe from intruders, and the other, obviously, is, will the data actually be there? Will the emails be preserved? Will the threads be able to be reassembled later? And I'm sure you've heard and read, as have the rest of us, about data systems and storage being dumped, being gone, and in some cases, I think a couple of weeks ago, with an entire internet phone system being unable to be retrieved in some cases.
The difference for this system is, is that what we have required in the contract is, is that Google will have a standard local data center that all of our data is in. It will also have all of our data replicated to two other data centers, so both a secondary and a tertiary backup, which will have a live failover. So if anything ever happened to the data center in the local area, it would immediately go to the secondary data center, and then if, at that moment, another tertiary one would be created. The tertiary would become second, and another one would be created. So we'll always have three live copies out there of our data to get, to have our staff have access to.
So basically, you're relying on defense in depth?
Absolutely.
Now, will the other Google applications be available to city employees, or is this particular enterprise just limited to the email?
No, we're actually going to be getting all kinds of other applications. E-discovery and archiving are very big for IT. We have no real disaster recovery for our email system today. Archiving gives us that. E-discovery gives us an ability to do searches of emails where we have to go to individual persons today and ask them to do their own searches. So, both of those are very big. We also are going to be getting the Google Apps, which is a word processing spreadsheet and presentation tools. We also get video conferencing, IM, and some other smaller applications like storage in the cloud.
Obviously, getting back to this issue of security for the Google system, particularly when it comes to the police department, going forward, would this information on the system be safe in the sense that nobody else, even within the city family, could get into it? And if there were a breach of some kind, how would you propose that that be dealt with?
So, the way the system is worked is, is that Google actually will have each piece of data, whether it be a file or an email, will be broken into smaller pieces of electronic data and then encrypted on different servers. So if anybody were able to get into a Google data center, they went and got their hands on a server, they could take a server out there, but none of the data is going to be readable in any, in any format. So, one, you have to have an application that puts those pieces together, and then secondarily, you have to have the encryption key to unencrypt it. So, we consider that to be very, very secure. But we've also written into the contract that it is absolutely ironclad and clear that all of the data that the city provides, no matter in what form, belongs to the city and no one else has rights to it. If, for some unknown reason, a piece of our data does get out through somewhere, we actually have breach-of-contract language in that for disclosure of that confidentiality.
You probably know that both NASA computers and the Pentagon computer systems have been breached, and there's been some suspicion that perhaps Chinese nationals, or maybe even the Chinese army's been involved in that. There are people all over the world who are trying to hack into systems just like this, and occasionally, we hear they succeed.
The big difference for Google is, is that Google does use a commercially available firewall. High-end, very good, very well-managed. The difference here, though, is, is that Google actually manufactures its own hardware. So they don't go out and buy an IBM or a Dell or a HP server, which the normal hackers would have access to the languages that run on those. Google has proprietary hardware and a proprietary language that runs on that. So even if, by some chance, they were able to get through a firewall, they would not be able to read anything on the service because they do not have the languages to do that.
This isn't something that happened overnight, obviously. How thoroughly has this been researched? How many other companies have been looked at? And bottom line, will LA actually see any cost savings by going to this Google service?
Well, it's been going on for a year now. I arrived in LA on the first of October, and we started this project the first week of November. So we did approve a concept for the, for six weeks, proving which way we should go, how we should look at for the email system. We wrote the RFP. The RFP was answered in April. We made a recommendation in May, and we've been working on the contract since.
RFP, of course, is Request for Proposals.
Yes.
Did most of the biggies in the industry actually respond to the RFP? Did you hear from pretty much everybody? You know, the Microsoft and the other companies?
We received 15 proposals, and every major producer of an email system did respond.
Oh, good. When will the system be in place? Who will be the first to use it? And then, what about the change over time? How's that going to work out?
One piece of question that I didn't answer from your former question was, how much money will this make? The contract actually does cost money the first year to get it implemented, because we have to run two email systems side-by-side to make sure that the new email system works to the company's standard. So, after that, we expect to save approximately about $1.4 million a year, but the overall five-year contract will save $5.5 million for the city.
People who will actually be using this email, or is it the Gmail system, what will they be seeing in terms of what they have to do at their office desktops?
The difference will be, is, is you won't have a client on your desktop like you do today, where you sign into Groupwise and it gives you your email and everything else. It's going to look virtually the same, but you're going to run it through an internet browser, and you will get that data like you would Hotmail, or Yahoo, or Gmail at your home.
Assistant General Manager of the Information Technology Agency, Kevin Crawford, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thank you very much.
And continuing our conversation about the Google Cloud, and joining us by phone now is the Chair of the Information Technology and Government Affairs Committee, District 6 Councilmember Tony Cardenas. Mr. Cardenas, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Glad to be with you, Jack.
We just spoke with the Assistant General Manager of ITA, Kevin Crawford, who explained what cloud computing is. A question for you, and one that some of your colleagues, of course, asked, will going with Google really save the city that money?
Yes. Google's going to save city money in a way that's not easy to calculate, and that is, a lot of the savings comes with efficiency and the lack of frustration that we're going to have in the future, of the frustration that people have today with our old system that's outdated and held together very loosely. So, the Google system is actually cloud computing, which means that Google is going to be responsible for the storage of all the data, for the maintenance of all those kinds of things, and when you get right down to it, we're going to be able to look back and realize that we saved a lot of time and a lot of money, and saved with a lot of personnel costs as well.
Of course, it's been noted that Los Angeles will be the largest city to use Google to manage its email. Should we have waited to see results from some of the smaller cities and businesses first?
Well, this is computing, but it really isn't rocket science. Cloud computing has been around for a while now. The actual concept of cloud computing is pretty straightforward, and the fact of the matter is, Google is definitely big enough and strong enough and fortified enough to have all the technical and all the hardware capabilities to handle a city like ours. Google does, in fact, have large, large organizations that have tens of thousands of users on their Google system. So, they have proven that the size of the city of Los Angeles usage is actually matched by other organizations that are doing just fine.
Obviously, several of your colleagues express concern about the security of a lot of sensitive documents being stored on the cloud. Do you have any concerns, and what happens when and if there is a breach?
Actually, I was one of the ones that brought up those security concerns a few months ago, but since then, they've actually addressed those concerns, and I'm glad they've done that. They've worked with the California Department of Justice to make sure that anybody who's at Google who has any access to that particular data is going to have the proper governmental clearance when it comes to security. So those are some of the aspects of security, and also, what, we are also aware of, which is part of the contract, this isn't just people making promises, but it's part of the contract, is that we will have that kind of security and a system that they will be backing up and making sure that we don't lose information, which is also a security concern as well. Today, our current system, some of our actual facilities, our servers, as they're called, where we store all this data and it's being processed and held for us for future use, some of it is actually behind a chain lock fence, and that is not safe. But Google has a state-of-the-art cloud computing system where we're going to move away from the loose, unfortunately, very loose system that we have today.
Presumably, Microsoft and places like the Pentagon and NASA have been tremendously diligent about their security, and yet their systems have been hacked into, all three of them within the past year.
Yes. When people talk about security, because we're dealing with human beings, and we're dealing with dynamics that are far beyond any person's control, the bottom line is, when we deal with security, what we have to do, and what we've done here, is make sure that we have as many of those requirements in the contract clearly delineated, but I will tell you this, there is no such thing as guaranteed security, even with the Pentagon. So, we're going to make it as tight as possible. We're making sure that we're protected as much as humanly possible, but the fact of the matter is, anybody who says that they can have any computer system that is 100% foolproof and guaranteed, well, that person or that organization is going to be the richest organization in the world, because no one, no organization or no government has been able to do that completely secured, 100% guaranteed.
Yeah, I guess it's literally true. Anything that has a wire plugged into the back of the mini-tower, you're vulnerable.
Or anything that has access to human beings. I mean, with all due respect, a lot, when you're talking about hacking, hacking isn't done by computers, hacking is done with computers, but by unscrupulous human beings. So, unfortunately, those elements will always be out there, but Google is, you know, is on the cutting edge of making sure that they are making their system as secure as humanly possible today. And that's what the big difference is, Jack. The thing is, we have a system that's old, we have a system that's inefficient, we have a system that everybody in the city's complaining about, and the fact of the matter is, cloud computing is the way to go today, and it actually is the way to go for the future.
Of course, this was not a decision that was exclusively made by your committee in the ITA. Were other departments involved in putting together this deal?
Well, actually, the Fire Department had a big say-so because of security issues, the LAPD, that department had a big say-so. Many tremendous questions that were overcome and satisfied, and with that, there was a lot going on, a lot of dialogue, a lot of understanding, to make sure if and when we move on a new system, we are going to make it bigger and better and more efficient. So today, we're extremely comfortable with the decision we've made. It was actually unanimous vote of the council, and the council had about an hour and a half, two hours of deliberation, after hours of deliberation in committee. So, what we've been able to do is satisfy a lot of the concerns, put those concerns to rest by making sure that the contract is ironclad solid to address all of those concerns, and that's where we're at today.
And finally, there was a lot of talk of video teleconferencing. Will, for example, neighborhood councils perhaps be using this system? And for that matter, will a lot of city employees be able to maybe work from home?
Yes, exactly. And that's one of the things about today and into the future. We're talking about efficiencies. Any city, any community, any company that says, "Go green," they got to make sure that where the people can actually reduce their travel and make sure they can still get their work done, that's something that's positive. And actually, in my opinion, the community is demanding. The community of, you know, Los Angeles, the community of California, and throughout the country and the world, everybody wants to be greener, everybody wants to be cleaner. And you're absolutely right. It's going to give greater opportunity for people to work where they're at, reducing the amount of travel and creating much more efficiency as well.
District 6 Councilmember Tony Cardenas, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thank you, Jack.
And again, I'd like to thank our guests, Assistant General Manager of the Information Technology Agency, Kevin Crawford, and District 6 Councilmember Tony Cardenas. The vote to approve the Google contract was unanimous. Item 12 on Friday was unanimously approved by your Los Angeles City Council. The council accepted the agreement with the Coalition of Los Angeles Unions, which will allow approximately 2,400 city employees to take early retirement and avoid layoffs, further furloughs, and help the city out of its current budget crisis. LA City View is the government-access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35, call our viewer hotline at (213) 473-3978. Our viewer guide is now available, too, online at lacity.org. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m., and on Sunday at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending October 30th, 2009. On behalf of Michael Flynn and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
difficult ways imaginable. Together, we can say thank you in so many ways. Small acts of kindness mean more than anything. With our support, veterans and military families can face even the most difficult challenges. Let's honor their service with ours.
Before approaching an intersection, so that's why two wrong turns don't make a right turn! Now let's learn about tailgating!
Hey, that's how I got my ticket!
You got a ticket for tailgating? That's not good. That can be really annoying.
Doesn't get you there any faster.
It leaves you no distance to brake.
Which makes it easier to get into a crash.
And it also may increase your insurance premium!
And I hate tailgaters!
Tailgating causes crashes! Back off!
Watch the road!
L.A. City View, Channel Thirty-Five. Your city, your channel.
Some of us already know who it is.
Some of us already know who it is.
Welcome to the City Council Meeting for Tuesday, November third, two thousand and nine. Hope everybody had a safe and good Halloween. We're back here in Council Chambers, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at ten a.m. It is after the hour ten oh seven, to be exact. Councilmembers Cardenas, Han, Wiesar, Labange, Rosendahl, and Zine are here on time, but we are still awaiting the following council members who are late. Councilmember Alakon, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Smith, and Councilmember Wesson. If you'll please join us as soon as possible. As soon as we have a quorum, we will begin our meeting. Want to welcome our viewers on Channel Thirty-Five, which broadcasts these meetings live on our city's cable system, and rebroadcast each evening as well. We are available online on the Internet at lacity.org, or through your phone by dialing two-one-three-six-two-one-CITY. Our agendas are available online, in person, or in the city clerk's office. Those are made available seventy-two hours in advance and twenty-four hours in advance for our special meetings. And if you'd like to be heard on any of the items, please fill out a speaker card in the back and hand it one to the sergeants-at-arms, or in our remote locations in San Pedro or Van Nuys City Halls, you can also testify remotely from there. With that, again, we'd want to thank those members that are here. We are waiting still two more members, and Mr. Smith, Mr. Wesson, Mr. Parks, and Mr. Alakon. If you'll please join us as soon as possible. Thank you for your patience, and if we fail to get a quorum, we will adjourn for lack of a quorum. Thank you. This is our final quorum call for Councilmembers Smith, Wesson, Parks, and Alakon. Mr. Reyes is excused, and Mr. Corretts is excused today. Again, Mr. Wesson, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Parks, and Mr. Alakon, please join us right away, or we will not have a meeting this morning. Thank you. We're waiting one more council member. We have about two more minutes before adjourning. Councilmembers Wesson, Parks, and Alakon. If the sergeants-at-arms can please inquire to their whereabouts. Thank you. All right, we have our quorum. Mr. Wesson, if you can call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Alakon, Cardenas, Han, Wiesar, Corretts, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti. Ten members present and a quorum. Mr. President.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Wesson moves, Mr. Zine second, without objection. Those will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right, we have Mr. Cardenas moving that, and Mr. Alakon second, without objection. Those will be approved as well. All right, next order of business, please.
Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there's a flag salute.
All right, if I can please ask everybody to rise for our pledge of allegiance, and Mr. Parks, if you'd be kind enough to lead us in a salute to the flag. Members, if I can ask everybody to please rise.
We have everyone stand, face the flag, place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Parks, if we can run through the agenda, please.
Yep. First item on the agenda, item one is a street lighting district notice for public hearing. Council should continue the hearing and present the ordinance on November twentieth.
Okay, without objection, we'll continue that till the twentieth, and keep the public hearing open. Next items.
Items two through eight are confirmation of building and safety liens, notice for public hearing.
Okay, we have two through eight, colleagues. Anybody wishing to call two through eight special? We have no cards on those either. So let's go ahead and prepare the roll on items two through eight, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those items are approved. Next items, please.
Items nine through fourteen are items which public hearings have been held. There is a request to continue item eleven to December eighth.
Okay, is there any objection, colleagues, to continuing that item till the, sorry, to the eighth?
December eighth.
December eighth, item number eleven, if not so ordered.
And a request to continue item thirteen to November seventeenth.
Okay, colleagues, any objection to continuing item number thirteen to the seventeenth? Seeing none, that will be order of business as well. If we can look at nine, ten, twelve, and fourteen, any specials, colleagues? Not, we did not. Mr. Rosendahl, would you like to call that special? Item number fourteen for Mr. Rosendahl. Other special items, colleagues? Nine, ten, and twelve? If not, let's go ahead then, and please prepare the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items fifteen through thirty, items which public hearings have not been held, ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we have cards on twenty-five and twenty-seven. We'll close the other public hearings. Any specials, colleagues? Fifteen through thirty-one. Fifteen through thirty-one. We do expect twelve members with Mr. Alakon when he joins us, so why don't we hold number fifteen through eighteen on the desk as well? Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I think on thirty-one, both committees had also continued that matter, so that needs, thirty-one needs to be continued also.
Okay, we'll get to that in just one second. I think we're just through thirty right now.
Oh, you just said thirty-one.
Yep. Any other specials, colleagues? Fifteen through thirty? If not, let's go ahead on the balance then. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, those are approved, and then you wanted to continue it again? Okay. Item thirty-one, colleagues, on the supplemental agenda, is there any objection to continuing that till the eighteenth? If not, so ordered. And let's call number thirty-two special for closed session. That'll take us to our general public comment, and we have two minutes per speaker, and our first speaker is Sean Murphy in Van Nuys, followed by Donna Perman. Good morning, Mr. Murphy.
Yes, good morning, City Council. How are you this morning? Uh, I've, we're going to learn in about fifty-five minutes our new police chief. I have a message for the new police chief. I hope he does a good job. Don't let crime slip away. I hope he does a good job getting new police cars. I'm, get new police cars. I just, I have faith, I pray that he does a good job. Also, I'd like to talk about the election coming up in December eighth. Two candidates were on the radio, and I was on the radio Friday night. I hope everybody in C D two listens to the sound of my voice Friday night. I asked, I asked a question about what Paul's going to be doing for C D two. That's who I'm supporting for C D two. I'm going to be voting for Paul Baklorian. I hope all the neighborhood councils do the same thing, Paul. Vote for Paul Baklorian. That's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Donna Perman is our next speaker.
Hello, good to see you, Mr. Garcetti. Anyway, you asked where people adopt pets, yet these people don't realize how expensive animals can be if they're sick. Animals are basically uninsured. There, there's one insurance, but it only covers animals under ten. How can you take care of your animals depends on how much you have, how well the vet chooses act. The prices can vary on services. Three hundred dollars for emergency care with basic food and water, a thousand dollars for IV, no supervision, or three, over three thousand dollars for IV and supervision. Vets don't tell you everything you need to know, which makes it impossible to choose a treatment. That, that needs to change. Animals need good, kind, reasonable-priced care. Vets who don't give up on older animals and give the same as they do for younger animals. Also, off the subject, please, L A dot is having problems asking either raise the prices or cut buses. Our commuter expresses, number five-seventy-three, is very important going over to Westwood in Century City, over from the valley to Century City. It's a very quick bus. I would cut down on the dash buses because I, basically, it goes around in a circle, and I don't really see it doing that much. We really need to have these commuter expresses, and we need to fix out the buses over there in Westwood. The one over there, C D five, please tell them the buses are running very terrible over there in Westwood. I have to wait twenty minutes sometimes for a bus early in the morning, or fifteen minutes. So this is very unacceptable if you want to get to work. I've got to work one time at seven a.m. Oh, I forgot to tell you, Marion Vogel is not here because she's not feeling well, and also because she's mourning her cat, which the vet didn't take care of, didn't help her take care of, and so that cat died prematurely. Anyway, please take care of the buses and take care of the vets. Thank you. They need to do better service. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Donna. I hope your, your voice gets better. Richard Kearns is our next speaker here in Council Chambers, and then Melrose Larry Green will follow Mr. Kearns. Good morning.
Good morning, President Garcetti, distinguished council members. My name is Richard Kearns. I'm a fifty-eight-year-old gay man with AIDS, a long-term survivor and activist, a medical cannabis advocate, a poet and journalist. I'm here this morning to suggest a Plan B for medical cannabis in Los Angeles. Please empower a special, high-speed, ad hoc medical cannabis team who, starting with the text the city's legislative analysts submitted to the Plumb Committee September twenty-fifth, can finish translating the whereas's to section numbers inside a month to produce a good-faith medical cannabis ordinance, one that includes storefront dispensaries, not just your garden variety, one that captures legislative intent, one that respects voter intent. Mr. Tutanich would have us believe that changing the law is against the law, so I thought I'd review with you why we want to change the law, in the hope that by reaffirming the broad vision of a mutual intent, by recalling the urgent and compelling reasons for creating medical cannabis dispensaries in the first place, we make it clear what the city attorney left out in his version. He left out saving lives. Medical cannabis clinics are an example of an extraordinary response to the global HIV/AIDS pandemic called for by U N AIDS Director Peter Peel, who characterizes Tutanich's type of failing to keep pace with a liberalizing society, shut them all down, "I don't care how drug war your attitude," as the new denialism. Let's start here. The chances of my survival as a person with AIDS increase three-hundred-and-thirty percent when I add medical cannabis to my treatment regimen. I can't take care of myself, cook and clean. Don't tell me to grow it myself. Don't tell me to eat cake. It would be nice if Mr. Tutanich would join the Twenty-First Century and contribute to this city's extraordinary response rather than wrecking it, but it's not going to happen. Please move ahead with Plan B.
Thank you very much. Melrose Larry Green is our next speaker, and then Dr. Clyde Williams.
Good morning, let's get right into it. Only have two minutes. I'm also a fifty-eight-year-old man. The last speaker was excellent. Number one, November fifteenth, I will be in East L.A. the entire day as the gold line opens up to the public. So I hope everybody will take off whenever they're doing November fifteenth and hang out with, with Jose Wiesar. I'm sure the mayor will be there, November fifteenth. I'm there, Jose. I am there. I'll be speaking Spanish and English. Okay, that's number one. Number two, I want to commend the L A P D for a wonderful performance job at Halloween. I was there, Hollywood Boulevard, and I want to thank the city council for funding all those police out there and putting them out there on the streets. There were no problems whatsoever. Number three, this is really one I wanted to talk about most importantly. The problem of talking on the cellphone and texting is out of control in the city of L.A. There are over six, well, you're not on, you're in the car right now, in the car. You're, you're in city council. You can talk on the cellphone all you want. Over six thousand people have died in the United States from either texting or talking on the cellphone. And you might say, what can be done about it? Well, I, Melrose Larry Green, would like to propose a civilian force, Dennis, Jose, a civilian force of maybe old guys like me standing on street corners, monitoring people on the cellphone. And then if I see somebody on the cellphone, tell them to give me a digital camera. I'll take a picture of the driver. I'll take a picture of the license plate. I don't know about you, I never lent my car to anybody else in fifty-eight years, and almost always, the person in the car owns the car. Give me a sign saying the next time that you're on the cellphone, you'll probably get a hundred-dollar ticket. Anything I can do, I am here. You know, I lost for mayor twice, so I have a lot of free time. This is a major problem, and I have twelve seconds left, so I want to say that covered all my things. I have five seconds left. Go Chris Christie. Thank you very much. I'm Melrose Larry Green.
Thank you, Mr. Melrose Larry Green. Dr. Williams, good morning.
Dr. Clyde Williams, four-one-one-five Barrett Road, El Sereno. Okay, seven-ten, State Route seven-ten, the tunnel. Two more organizations have come out to oppose it officially, Arroyo Seco and the Glendale Homeowners Association. So there's a, still a growing wave against the seven-ten, overground, on-ground, underground. But on Thursday, there's a technical advisory committee meeting. Hopefully, by that time, maybe the city council will have taken a position, either up or down, we don't really care, on this five-point-six-billion-dollar project, which will, as currently planned, devastate approximately three hundred houses in El Sereno, and a lot of houses at the North End also. M T A has it on their priority list for their long-range transportation plan and for their public-private partnership plan. Caltrans has released a report. It indicates that maybe the route will go to Verdugal and Eagle Rock Boulevard in Mr. Garcetti's district. We don't know, because the city doesn't seem to know what's going on. We don't know what's going on. Caltrans tries to keep us in the dark most of the time. We would highly recommend another alternative be considered, that is, a route-neutral, multimode program for all of northeast L.A. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Walter Bechtel, followed by Matt Dowd.
Good morning, thank you. I, I want
Continue also.
Okay, we'll get to that in just one second. I think we're just through thirty right now.
Oh, you just said thirty-one.
Yep. Any other specials, colleagues? Fifteen through thirty? If not, let's go ahead on the balance then. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, those are approved. And then you wanted to continue it again? Okay. Item thirty-one, colleagues, on the supplemental agenda. Is there any objection to continuing that till the eighteenth? If not, so ordered. And let's call number thirty-two special for closed session. That'll take us to our general public comment. And we have two minutes per speaker. And our first speaker is Sean Murphy in Van Nuys, followed by Donna Perman. Good morning, Mr. Murphy.
Yes, good morning, City Council. How are you this morning? Uh, I've... We're gonna learn in about fifty-five minutes our new police chief. I have a message for the new police chief. I hope he does a good job. Don't let crime slip away. I hope he does a good job getting new police cars. I'm... Get new police cars. I just... I have faith. I pray that he does a good job. Also, I'd like to talk about the election coming up in December eighth. Two candidates were on the radio, and I was on the radio Friday night. I hope everybody in CD two listens to the sound of my voice Friday night. I asked a... I asked a question about what Paul's gonna be doing for CD two. That's who I'm supporting for CD two. I'm gonna be voting for Paul Bakorian. I hope all the neighborhood councils do the same thing, Paul. Vote for Paul Bakorian. That's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Donna Perman is our next speaker.
Oh, good to see you, Mr. Garcetti. Anyway, you asked where people adopt pets. These people don't realize how expensive animals can be if they're sick. Animals are basically uninsured. There... There's one insurance, but only cover animals under ten. How can you take care of your animals depends on how much you have, how well the vet chooses act. The prices can vary on services. Three hundred dollars for emergency care with basic food and water, a thousand dollars for IV, no supervision, or three... over three thousand dollars for IV and supervision. Vets don't tell you everything you need to know, which makes it impossible to choose a treatment. That needs to change. Animals need good, kind, reasonable-priced care. Vets who don't give up on older animals and give the same as they do for younger animals. Also, off the subject, please, L.A. DOT is having problems asking either raise the prices or cut buses. Our commuter expresses, number five seventy-three, is very important going over to Westwood in Century City, over from the valley to Century City. It's a very quick bus. I would cut down on the dash buses because I... Basically, it goes around in a circle, and I don't really see it doing that much. We really need to have these commuter expresses, and we need to fix out the buses over there in Westwood. The one over there, CD five, please tell them the buses are running very terrible over there in Westwood. I have to wait twenty minutes sometimes for a bus early in the morning, or fifteen minutes. So this is very unacceptable if you want to get to work. I've got to work one time at seven. Oh, I forgot to tell you, Marion Vogel is not here because she's not feeling well, and also because she's mourning her cat, which the vet didn't take care of, didn't help her take care of. And so that cat died prematurely. Anyway, please take care of the buses and take care of the vets. Thank you. They need to do better service. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Donna. I hope your voice gets better. Richard Kearns is our next speaker here in Council chambers, and then Melrose Larry Green will follow Mr. Kearns. Good morning.
Good morning, President Garcetti, distinguished council members. My name is Richard Kearns. I'm a fifty-eight-year-old gay man with AIDS, a long-term survivor and activist, a medical cannabis advocate, a poet and journalist. I'm here this morning to suggest a Plan B for medical cannabis in Los Angeles. Please empower a special, high-speed, ad hoc medical cannabis team who, starting with the text the city's legislative analysts submitted to the Plum Committee September twenty-fifth, can finish translating the whereas's to section numbers inside a month. To produce a good-faith medical cannabis ordinance, one that includes storefront dispensaries, not just your garden variety, one that captures legislative intent, one that respects voter intent. Mr. Tutanich would have us believe that changing the law is against the law. So I thought I'd review with you why we want to change the law, in the hope that by reaffirming the broad vision of a mutual intent, by recalling the urgent and compelling reasons for creating medical cannabis dispensaries in the first place, we make it clear what the city attorney left out in his version. He left out saving lives. Medical cannabis clinics are an example of an extraordinary response to the global HIV/AIDS pandemic called for by UN AIDS Director Peter Pele, who characterizes Tutanich's type of failing to keep pace with a liberalizing society, shut them all down, "I don't care how drug war" your attitude as the new denialism. Let's start here. The chances of my survival as a person with AIDS increased three-hundred-and-thirty percent when I add medical cannabis to my treatment regimen. I can't take care of myself, cook and clean. Don't tell me to grow it myself. Don't tell me to eat cake. It would be nice if Mr. Tutanich would join the Twenty-First Century and contribute to this city's extraordinary response rather than wrecking it, but it's not going to happen. Please move ahead with Plan B.
Thank you very much. Melrose Larry Green is our next speaker, and then Dr. Clyde Williams.
Good morning. Let's get right into it. Only have two minutes. I'm also a fifty-eight-year-old man. The last speaker was excellent. Number one, November fifteenth, I will be in East L.A. the entire day as the gold line opens up to the public. So I hope everybody will take off whenever they're doing November fifteenth and hang out with Jose Uiza. I'm sure the mayor will be there November fifteenth. I'm there, Jose. I am there. I'll be speaking Spanish and English. Okay, that's number one. Number two, I want to commend the LAPD for wonderful performance job at Halloween. I was there, Hollywood Boulevard. And I want to thank the city council for funding all those police out there and putting them out there on the streets. There were no problems whatsoever. Number three, this is really what I wanted to talk about most importantly. The problem of talking on the cellphone and texting is out of control in the city of L.A.
What?
There are over six... Well, you're not on... You're in the car right now, in the car. You're in city council. You can talk on the cellphone all you want. Over six thousand people have died in the United States from either texting or talking on the cellphone. And you might say, what can be done about it? Well, I, Melrose Larry Green, would like to propose a civilian force, Dennis, Jose, a civilian force of maybe old guys like me standing on street corners, monitoring people on the cellphone. And then if I see somebody on the cellphone, Tom, you give me a digital camera. I'll take a picture of the driver. I'll take a picture of the license plate. I don't know about you, I never lent my car to anybody else in fifty-eight years. And almost always, the person in the car owns the car. Give me a sign saying the next time that you're on the cellphone, you'll probably get a hundred-dollar ticket. Anything I can do, I am here. You know, I lost for mayor twice, so I have a lot of free time. This is a major problem. And I have twelve seconds left, so I want to say that covered all my things. I have five seconds left. Go Chris Christie. Thank you very much. I'm Melrose Larry Green.
Thank you, Mr. Melrose Larry Green.
Thank you, Dennis.
Dr. Williams, good morning.
Dr. Clyde Williams, four-one-one-Five Barrett Road, El Sereno. Okay, seven-ten, State Route seven-ten, the tunnel. Uh, two more organizations have come out to oppose it officially, Arroyo Seco and the Glendale Homeowners Association. So there's still a growing wave against the seven-ten, overground, on-ground, underground. So... But on Thursday, there's a technical advisory committee meeting. Hopefully, by that time, maybe the city council will have taken a position, either up or down, we don't really care, on this five-point-six-billion-dollar project, which will, as currently planned, devastate approximately three hundred houses in El Sereno, and a lot of houses at the North End also. MTA has it on their priority list for their long-range transportation plan and for their public-private partnership plan. Caltrans has released the report. It indicates that maybe the route will go to Verdugal and Eagle Rock Boulevard in Mr. Garcetti's district. We don't know, because the city doesn't seem to know what's going on. We don't know what's going on. Caltrans tries to keep us in the dark most of the time. We would highly recommend another alternative be considered, that is, a route-neutral, multimode program for all of northeast L.A. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Walter Bechtel, followed by Matt Dowd.
Good morning. Thank you. I wanted to say something about some of the big companies that obviously the city has been having some trouble with, not just AEG or MTA. But if you remember back over at the Presidio a few years ago, we lost... A couple of years ago, we lost three or four of the buildings that were promised to the city that they would be preserved for until doomsday. They were burned down, and it turned out that the company that the city entrusted money with was actually shuffling the money out the back door to who knows who. So I would just want to remind the council, just because the company is a vested company, or initially gave the city a good impression, doesn't mean that they can't fall, that they can't make mistakes. And that's why we have rules and regulations, such as in the case of SRO. If they're not complying with zoning administration mandates, I think it's time to pull their card and bring sanctions against them. We had some deaths in hotels there a couple of years ago, not just Clay Esther Peters from heat prostration, but some other people. And I think that in the case of the Ford Hotel, they did not even give the public a time to... For input on the Cup meeting that's mandated by the federal judge. And I... I would hope that you would please extend the time for eighteen months and ask them to make sure that they come under compliance with zoning administration, and let's stall the project off for another eighteen months, the eighteen months that they did not come into compliance with zoning administration mandates.
Thank you, Mr. Bechtel. Matt Dowd.
Yes, thank you, Los Angeles, the city where you smell the empty building sites, the unsold luxury condos, all the developers. I just came through downtown. It's a ghost town again. And we told you a couple of years ago, nobody wants to live downtown. You're just shoveling money into a big pit. You should be helping the homeless, not building development towers full of condos that are never gonna be sold. The banks are holding all the debt, and it's all a nightmare. So start looking at what you can do towards the homeless, at least. They come down here, talk to the city council, but they never do anything. They're all over here talking about the weekend and how all their lovely things that are going on with street banners and, you know, all the lovely things. In Griffith Park, Mr. Labonge, but guess what? Your attorney, he wrote in opposition to our injunction. So everything we said here is all in the court now. It's great. You know what he wrote about Richard Alacon? I want to read out of this pleading that your attorney wrote. More specifically, at the September two oh nine city council meeting during public comment, Salzburg called Councilman Alacon "one of the most shadiest, most troublesome, problematic council members in the history of the city itself." Federal court, that's what he said, you know? That's what he's... Like, that's what he's arguing. That's not free speech. He's like, oh, no, that's a disruption. Same with Dowd's disruptive comments directed to President Jan Perry, calling her, quote, "pathetic and hopeless and is not doing a very good job. You need to get together and lose her." But apparently, that's not... That's what he wrote. And you know what else he wrote about the permits down at Venice Beach? Mr. Labonge should be hearing this. Tell him to listen. He said, your attorney, that you do not-
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Your time is up. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Item fourteen called special by Casamet Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl, number fourteen. Mr. Bill Rosendahl, number fourteen.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank DOT and colleagues. You all need to know that the issues of the major venues, as Mr. Labonge well knows, that are gonna be impacted by the fact that the city is broke, and that's the Hollywood Bowl, the Greek Theater, Dodger Stadium, Staples Center, L.A. Live Complex, and the Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum in and around Exposition Park, that the council has interacted with this, DOT has interacted with it, and we have been able to sit with each of the vendors and work the issues out. And I wanted my colleagues to know that, and this is to be noted and filed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. There was a card on that, but the public hearing has been held on that. The matter is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Next item, please.
Item twenty-five called special for cards.
Number twenty-five. Dr. Williams, number twenty-five, sir?
A very short comment. Dr. Clyde Williams, four-one-one-Five Barrett Road, El Sereno, northeast L.A. Banners that commit... That depict a non-event area. This is the first time in a long time that there are no spatial events other than this banner for non-events. How many neighborhood councils were consulted regarding the banners? Are the banners going to have any recognition of the neighborhood councils which are subject to the Port of L.A.? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Matt Dowd, number twenty-five, sir?
Yes, this is a great one. The great city of Los Angeles, and here we are. You know, we're talking about installing street banners to beatify the port interfaces with local communities. Nobody cares about street banners around the port. Let me tell you, I'm out on the street. Nobody cares. People care about moving those goods out of the city of Los Angeles. Get them out of here, quick, and get rid of all the trucks. You need to... See, the mayor is wasting money on a subway to the sea. You need a rail line from the port to get all the goods out of here so our kids don't suffer from all those diesel fumes up and down those one-ten, seven-ten freeways, all those trucks around the city. No wonder L.A. USD is hopeless in the rankings. They're sucking down all the diesel fumes. Now, build an underground subway from the port and get it out into the desert somewhere and just roll all those containers out of here. But no, we've got to go, oh, let's put up some beautiful street banners so everyone knows where the Port of Los Angeles is. Still not concentrating on the fundamentals, and that's why the city's in trouble. I'm from New Zealand originally. That's what we do. We cover the fundamentals first. It's like building downtown. There was no fundamental infrastructure, no job base. You send all the Hollywood productions out of town. So who's gonna buy all the luxury condos? Who's gonna pay for them with their income they don't have? See, these are fundamentals. Now, the port, let's get back to the fundamentals. I like to see Mrs. Hahn, Ms. Hahn, whatever the political correct way is to say it. I don't even know anymore because of the attorney's rules. But cleaning up the beaches, that's one thing. That's a good thing. I'll say it's good things, but the fundamental is-
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. The matter is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item, please.
Mr. President, items fifteen through eighteen are the ordinances that will be held on the desk for twelve, and there are now twelve members.
Call those matters. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Very well, thank you. Next item.
Item twenty-seven called special for cards.
Number twenty-seven. Lisa Abaka. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning, members. I'm here representing the Greater Echo Park Alleeja Neighborhood Council. What you have before you is our new office lease. I'd like to acknowledge Randall Hernandez from Bank of America, Tom Grego from the city attorney's office, Daniel Reese from Dunn, who negotiated with our neighborhood council president, a new lease for an old, unused drop-in center that we're gonna be rehabbing and using as the neighborhood council's community center. So we hope you approve it.
I think we might.
Okay.
Thank you. Matt Dowd, number twenty-seven.
All right. Well, you know, I'm against neighborhood councils now completely because there's too much infighting. You can see it all over the neighborhood council system. People don't show up to meetings, and then they'll show up once a month, and then they want to make problems for the rest of the council. The city council doesn't give them any credibility, really. They do whatever they want. They do what the mayor or the developers or any of whoever's pulling the strings want. So... And the other thing with neighborhood councils, there's no money for it. And if you're gonna be leasing a building for someone, you might as well wait a few months. Just put everything on hold and say, look, we'll get it, you know, at half the price in a few months' time, the way downtown's going. But yeah, the neighborhood councils, the infighting and the CD two candidates talked about it a lot, the lack of disclosure, they're all for that, too. Tamar Galitzin and all these... Chris Essel, none of them wanted any disclosure. I was shocked. You know, these people are trying... They all have their own agendas on these neighborhood councils. There's even people out there forming neighborhood councils that I know of as a manipulative move to counter some other homeowners association in the neighborhood. So they're forming their own neighborhood council and writing their own bylaws and, you know, like, it's just agendized. And all these people need massive disclosure so that we know if you have interests in that neighborhood and you're voting on things that are gonna be helping your interests, which is an ethics conflict, ethics violation. So neighborhood councils, I'm for full disclosure, Form 700, whatever it takes, because transparency might as well start at the bottom if it's not at the top.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti, number twenty-seven.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to say thank you to Lisa and her great efforts in putting this forward as a resident of Echo Park and as somebody who enjoyed having that presence of the police department right there at the drop-in center. To be able to take this next step forward is something very impressive. Thank you for the work that you did on this on behalf of my own neighborhood. But also, I know Mr. Reyes, who's excused on city business for this meeting, and I are both excited to have this here. It shows you exactly what neighborhood councils can do when they focus on some of the great projects that are before us and really have that local work. And thanks to everybody who worked on this, from our staffs and from city departments and the police department. So congratulations, and you'll definitely get your yes vote today, and we'll have it open and running. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. The matter is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Congratulations, Lisa. Next item, please.
That leaves the closed-session item.
Closed-session item. We will go into closed session on the remaining item. In accordance with California state law, we will now go into closed session. We will return after closed session. So the folks that are in the audience have to clear the chambers. Sergeant Arms, can you please clear the chambers for our closed session? Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we're back in open session. Mr. Parks, we're gonna call on you for an explanation.
Okay. Our explanation, the council previously had approved a settlement on this case. We have a court case looming and we, the Budget and Finance Committee, and also request the council to approve this settlement, but that in sixty days, that the CAO, CLA, and the city attorney come back to the council in conjunction with CD-14 to determine the permanent and future use of this property with all zoning issues incorporated. That we also ask that in that evaluation, that all revenue sources such as property 4 Quimby, settlement funds be reevaluated, but that this purchase be made with short-term commercial paper at this time until a final designation of the use of the property. And the final issue is that if this property is ever sold, that the revenue sources that purchased it be repaid and that not go into the current real property sale accounts.
The only thing I'd ask, add to that is that you authorize the city attorney's office and the general manager of the Department of General Services to execute necessary documents to complete the settlement.
That's right.
All right, that'll be added. Mr. Clerk, anything else on that before we vote? Full explanation given? Dionne? Dionne has input in this.
And just for clarification, the proposed settlement involves a payment of nine million dollars to purchase the property and settle the litigation, refund all unused deposits for development permits or entitlements for the property, which is a subject of litigation, authorize the general manager of the Department of General Services to execute a purchase and sale agreement and escrow instructions consistent with the terms of the settlement, accept the property on behalf of the city of Los Angeles contingent upon its satisfaction with the physical condition of the property, authorize the city attorney to execute and approve all necessary documents which are required to carry out the settlement, and to provide the funding needed to complete the settlement provisions that was mentioned earlier by Councilman Parks and our assistant city attorney.
Thank you very much. Okay, that matter is now before us with that explanation. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Very well, thank you. You're very welcome. Next item, please.
Council has motions for posting interrferal.
Posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused to arrive at ten forty for tomorrow's meeting. That meets council policy.
Uh, Councilmember Garcetti is excused.
Councilmember Parks requests to be excused December eighth, ninth, eleventh, fifteenth, and sixteenth for personal business. A motion is required for the ninth and the eleventh.
Motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Rosendahl.
And Councilmember Perry requests to be excused to arrive at eleven ten and to leave at twelve thirty for tomorrow's meeting and to leave at one PM on Wednesday, November eighteenth, both for city business and both meet council policy.
Uh, Ms. Perry is excused.
That clears the desk.
Members, any announcements? Announcements? There's an announcement that took place at eleven o'clock. Anybody want to announce? Mr. Garcetti? There was an announcement for our audience that may not be watching local television?
I've, uh, well, it has broke in the news that, uh, Chief, Deputy Chief Charlie Beck has been nominated by the mayor to be our next police chief, and I just want to congratulate him. I'm sure many of us do. He's an extraordinary member of our police department. He represents a new era in the police department. I've had the joy of working with him in the Rampart Division, and I know that Mr. Parks knows him very well as well, but we have in Charlie Beck, somebody who's an extraordinary leader, and we will have very vigorous hearings here. I know Mr. Smith, our Public Safety Chair, will be having a hearing in Public Safety next Monday and to get a chance for the public to learn about Charlie Beck and to give their opinions as well, but congratulations to the mayor on a great process and on extraordinary man, and congratulations to all three finalists, who are all very, very strong finalists, but I think we can all be proud in the city of Charlie Beck being our next police chief.
Very well. Interesting that Chief Beck started his career at LAPD as a reserve officer, like Councilmember Smith, and he rose to the level, yeah, I'm a reserve now, okay. Thank you, Mr. Alakot. Any other comments? Any other announcements? No other announcements? Adjournment motions? Adjournment motions, please stand. Everyone, please stand for adjournment motions. Mr. Rosendahl, adjournment motions.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want the council to adjourn in memory of Devon Patel ski. Devon was hit in the car accident and passed away. A little bit of her background, the family is still in shock over losing her. Devon was born in Santa Monica, California on March first, nineteen eighty-four. She graduated from Crossroads High School in two thousand and two. She was attending UC Santa Barbara studying communications and was a graduate in December. Devon loved people and talked and loved and was very passionate in her feelings. Wherever she walked, she left a trail of change. She openly confessed all her faults and helped others accept their own human frailties. In fact, she worked at the Clearview Rehab Center as a counselor, had a big heart, volunteered also at animal shelters. In fact, there's gonna be a celebration of her life on November twentieth at the Clearview Rehab Center in Venice, and besides celebrating her life, a scholarship will be given in her name. In the two weeks before her death, she kept a constant conversation with her mother about how to tell the young man she loved that she loved him. She wanted to make it real. Devon passed away on October eighteenth, two thousand and nine, surrounded by loved ones in Westwood, California. She was just twenty-five years old. Memorial services were held on October twenty-third at the Brentwood Presbyterian Church. Devon leaves behind her devoted parents, Ronald and Shauna, Shauna Gottfried, and her brother, Michael. She also leaves behind many aunts, uncles, and cousins. Community was really taken aback by such an untimely death in a car wreck, and we wish her and her family greatest sympathy and condolences. Also have another adjournment motion, colleagues, and this is for James Gallagher Patel. James is survived by his father and mother, James and Colleen, and sisters Jenny and Tegan. John Gregory, one of my staffers, was a friend of this gentleman when they were going to Loyola Marymount University. James Gallagher Patel was born July first, nineteen eighty-eight, in Stanford, Connecticut. He was a senior sociology major at Loyola Marymount University and a member of the Beta Phi Phi fraternity. According to friends and classmates, James was kind, selfless, and a genuine joy to be around. He was the life of the party and a friend who's around, everybody knew they could count on him. James was a friend who always kept smiling, would befriend a stranger at any point. James would always stand up for his friends, no matter what the circumstances. While attending school, James was employed at LAX Los Angeles Firing Range and always had dreams of becoming a United States Marine. As a child, James was diagnosed with a heart condition that prevented him from achieving his goal. James always boasted about being turned down from the military more times than anybody else, claiming, "At least I made some sort of impact in the military." Sense of humor there. James was also known for being very proud of his many tattoos, three of which were tattooed on his wrists and side that read "Trust, Honor, and Loyalty." James passed away last Sunday inside his Westchester home from self-afflicted gunshot wounds. He was just twenty-one years old. James is survived by his father and mother, James and Colleen, and sisters Jenny and Tegan. A memorial mass for James was held on October twenty-ninth in the Sacred Heart Chapel at Loyola Marymount University. James' family, friends, fraternity brothers, and countless others from LMU community filed into the chapel to the capacity of it all to celebrate his life and honor his memory. May he rest in peace.
Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn today in memory of Leigh Sakota, who passed away on October fifteenth at the age of thirty-four from a rare and aggressive form of cancer. Leigh was born in New York City in nineteen seventy-five and grew up in Pacific Palisades. After graduating from Marlboro School where she captained the soccer and gymnastics teams, she attended Tufts University, which in nineteen ninety-six awarded her a BA in English and Psychology with highest thesis honors in psychology. After college, she went to work at Elen Pharmaceuticals where Leigh helped advance clinical research in Alzheimer's and Parkinson's diseases, as well as in multiple sclerosis. She became a senior advertising sales executive at some of the world's largest internet companies. Leigh is survived by her husband, Harry Smith, of San Francisco, parents James and Lani Sakota of Pacific Palisades, brother John Sakota, and wife Elizabeth Peters of Washington, DC. Her mother, Lani Sakota, is someone who has been very active in democratic circles and active in the civic life of the city of Los Angeles, often contributing to charitable causes. A celebration of her life was held this past Saturday at the Royal Hawaiian Hotel in Oahu. In memory of Leigh, her family has established the Leigh Sakota Foundation to provide hope and healing for all young women fighting rare cancers. Anyone interested in this foundation can go to www.lee sakota, L-E-I-G-H-S-A-K-O-T-A, dot com. She will be missed.
Ms. Perry?
I wanted to second that because I actually used to work with Lani, and, you know, I remember how proud she was when both of her children got into such great schools and they were high achievers, and she was a really lovely, lovely young lady, and so I would like to sign on to that, too.
Very well. Any other adjournment motions, colleagues? This concludes our meeting. City Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you, and we will return tomorrow, a Wednesday, city council meeting. Good afternoon, everyone, in Los Angeles.